What happened? So now you can speak and I'll translate.
Thank you. Jaima Siki.
You should try that again.
Jaima Siki. James. My name is even here.
You don't need translation, go for it.
Yes. I know little bit Hindi.
We like a Karchi Hindi area.
Thank you so much for your warm welcome.
Ningalde swigaranathene valaera nani.
And thank you so much to Pastor James for his hospitality.
Pastor James in order valerie nani varaino service night.
I have been treated so nicely and well in the house of Pastor James with Jesse and yeah.
We itle malas welcome arnu.
Yeah, it's a pleasure to be here and I'm so happy.
Pulli valaera sandoshavaanana orakarana rambhetha.
Yeah. So when this opportunity came, yeah, I'm so happy. It's so exciting to be here in Saudi Arabia, but it's another country that is even more love in my heart.
Ee rajyatanode pulike kero burdon onduro karcha parunda. Adha puli il, nindabarnu, nee rovalare interestaitolaru kariman.
And that is India.
Ayu, adhi rajyaalato, adhi Indiaano.
Yeah. I've been to India more than 20 times.
Pulina, namada India le 20 daunathne, 20 daunake mele poitonda.
Yeah. So mostly I've been visiting a mission and a missionary from my home village in Norway to in UP.
Pulire naatile uro mission melekai 20 daamante vaisepoiro stree, namada UP il uro missions, it's a hospital, right?
Hospital, children's school and village ministry and church.
Oru kalyanengalikke tharande stregal UP chenna, oru dres schoolam hospitaland devanamatal thodangi. A mission valeranamai karchanala olukum umbuare pugunandarunu, a ministry puli kanaanu. Ourda partner janamai tana puli pokantana UP il.
I'm coming from Norway.
Pulii Norway nanana.
And that's very north and very cold.
Adhu angatavana, valaera tanupavana.
And now it's full of snow and it's minus 20 degrees, so it's very, very cold.
Adhalarkmansalaydholle stotra.
And home, I have a beautiful family. I'm so blessed.
Pulikarnan maliru anigrekepatte rukudumamanda.
I'm so rich. I have four daughters.
Pulii valaera panakarnan, ala panakannala. Pulii valaera anigrekepatte rukudumavanu, naali pemblariam.
Yeah, and two boys.
Rande angkottigalond.
Yeah. And a beautiful wife and.
Santharimala bharianndu.
Yeah. And I'm, on daily basis, I'm running a dairy farm with milking cows.
Pulikarnan sandhamaitolaru businessana, puli farming jenno, milk productionana.
So and in Norway farming is quite good business.
Norway le aalkaradigamilathonda, awarda businessne valaradigamai rajjum supportinana. Appum, inyanola farming business valaray maladana aurka.
And my daughters are Rachel at 10.
Pulikanadhitamola Rachel, patu vaisa.
Hannah, eight.
Randaamathamola Hannah, ettu vaisa.
Ulaava, seven.
Ulaava, eero vaisa.
Singna, six.
Singna, har vaisa.
Johannes.
Johannes.
Four.
Naali vaisa.
And Joshua is one.
Joshua, oru vaisa.
And my wife is called Maria.
Pulikanadhariyadu periyam Maria nanana.
Yeah. Someone asked me that I have to sing, I have to sing.
Aaruvitidikkenore pulikarnan nirubandichapadaanaitu parangittonda.
So then I understand, I have to try to sing.
Pulii adhondu valaradigamai padaanagrekinu.
So it's in my language, the Norwegian language.
Pulikanndafashailana parta.
And just that you sound the language, one song that may you can join.
Uh huh.
Yes, yes, you just can.
Pulire partu vaden kayedikya, pral saiipika.
Norwegian language. O du somme ette liten fulvell sing vor mat o gud. Heova es my pasor nada akime faltara. This is just a very simple song we very often sing when we start eating. It's like a blessing for the food.
Thidu valaray simpleaitre partana, idhu kajipinamumbai te anigrechapadaanre partana.
But also like to sing a hymn that you may call, no, that one too, but Navne Jesus. Yeah, it's about the name of Jesus, the name of, yeah.
Go for it.
Navne Jesus, rea fardi.
It's not there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Navne Jesus, deher evi, ing de, uts, nae. What? Namne Jesus, moja elsket, ing, moja, namne Jesus moja elsket. Ble, elsket, namne Jesus.
Any song, any song.
Okay. That's, I'm so surprised, I forgot words.
Pulikarnan valaray.
We take it later, I can take it later.
Pulipine padam.
It's, yeah. One of the motivations that I make it to come to Saudi.
Pulikanad valaradigama interestekoodutthare karim ingotveran.
Is that I have a very wish to visit the real Mount Sinai in Arabia.
Ingotveranolla pulikanad inspiration, namada Mount Sinai, mala kanaanollam, awdade.
So Sinai, that is where Moses get the Ten Commandments.
Sinai mala elana, Mosheke patte kalpaningalebechida.
I strongly believe that is in Saudi Arabia, in the Jabal Alos or Jabal Musa.
Nyan valaradigama, nyan strongat visshusikinnu, Mount Sinai male, enna paranu, Saudi Arabia laana Jabal Alos, enna varanu, sala.
This is maybe obvious for you, but for us in Norway, we, I had a wrong map in the back of the Bible, where they're showing that Sinai maybe is in the.
Egypt?
No, in Egypt, in Sinai peninsula half, yeah.
Idhu ningalke pallarka mariamarikim, paksha Norway le nyangalke kittiyam appan sirichu, awdakoodutthirunadu, Egyptin adutaitana, awdakmapil parane, Sinai mala.
But yeah, so I get so encouraged by visiting this mountain, Jabal Alos. And so we are planning, me and Justin, to go there and now they come and this.
Verunadhusingalaladu poi kanaanu arum, nyangalurmitu vaidu, awdai pookanaita agrekinu.
Yeah, so please pray for us.
Adhandu devan ningalprarthikannam.
When we go to this trip.
Nyangalawada pookamol.
And so pray for protection and that gods will guide. So this trip will become to the purpose that it should be.
Adhingala devaiidu prarthikannan nyangaditripinapati, nyangalke, nyangadasurekshatthom, idhu pugunagaringaladu, adhu, anigramaitirivanam, allaraprathanabekshikannu.
And the last weeks and months, I have reading and studying about the Mount Sinai and what Moses experienced there.
Nyan kainya, the archegal massanglaid, nyan idhene patipadikencheyu arnu, Moshe, Moshe idhinde, basically in the history, nyan oku arnu.
Yeah. So I have a short message about Mount Sinai in Arabia, where God give his instructions.
Nyan endelu, richariyame seshi, nyan prepare edithonda, i Mount Sinai pati.
And but when we read this, we read this through the eyes of after Jesus.
Namalidu vaikamol, namala eshuenda vara vini shesam.
So I will share some really strong testimonies from different people that have met Jesus.
Nyan devatekanda chela aalkarindesaksatthanu, enna paranagrekinu.
Or, yeah, that, it's, yeah, it's very encouraging for me. First, I would share a testimony from, with, from Marta, a woman.
Marte de lifeelanu, nyan paranagrekinu.
She was the sister of Lazarus and this, she said.
Larson de sister arnu.
And Jesus used to stay in her house, so she was a good friend of Jesus.
Esu pulikarnan aparudan nilkamairu, adhondu devatendu varadutha suhrta arnu.
And I will read from, from 11, John 11.
Yohanna and apostagam, padinaminde, irathii.
And 27, or maybe also 25. But she said this, "Yes, Lord," she replied, "I believe that you are the Messiah."
Yohanna and apostagam, padinaminde, iruthanjot, iruthere.
The son of God who's, yeah.
Let them read. Vai chat.
He said unto them, "I am the research man of life. He is a believer in me, though he is dead. Yet shall he live. And whosoever lives and believes in me shall never die. Believers told this. She said unto him, "Yea, Lord, I believe that thou art the Christ, the Son of God, which is coming to the world." And when she had told that, he went away and called Mary his sister directly."
Yeah, very good.
Esu avlad, nyan danna punarthaanu jeevina magunnu.
Yeah, yeah.
Esu avlad, nyan danna punarthaanu jeevina magunnu, ennail visshusikannan marichaladu jeevikum.
Yeah. Yeah. This, um. So strong about, she witnessed about Jesus, you are the Messiah, son of God.
Idhu valaray shaktamariyare karimana, kartavinatircharanadu.
And it's very similar to the testimony of Peter when he said this.
Idhu valaray similaraitolare karimana, patthrosam, idhre karinene parainu.
The Messiah and the son of the living God. And it's another similar, a bit similar, maybe. Yeah. Short scripture from testimony of Stephen, right before they, they were so angry on him.
Stefanus not, Stefanus enna postal, namalakanaamol, ainathu, kaanangkayinu, Stefanus ne, Stefanus enodu, paingradisham arnu.
Yeah. It's, I will read from Act 7.
Apostalam postagam, nyan vaikana agrekinu, 8 and 96. Apostalam postagam, 8 and 96.
Idha sorganduranirikinnu, manshutran devatindavala thuahtirik, nilkunadu, nyan kanaanu, enna parinu.
Yeah. And the Pharisees or the dudes around there get so angry when they heard it said this.
Yudamaram, parishamaram, idhu ketta poor, valaray deshatalarunu.
It was so provocative that they, that he claimed and he saw that Jesus and God was sitting on the same trail.
Idhu ivarka ketta poor, ivarka saikambatathu, roodesham arnu, karnam, ivare nokepoor, Stefanus varainu, nyan kartavinay sorgathil kanaanu.
And, and one of the reasons they were so provoked, it was a misunderstanding that they hold from Mount Sinai.
Awarda, uridhka karim, arideshapaditheda, ande, karnam, onnanu varnial, awarka misunderstanding. Awarka manas, awarka tettidericha, oru karim, tettaerichinda, the misunderstanding of.
No, I will, I will tell you later, the, about the Pharisees, they, they. I can, I can explain, the Pharisees claim that when Moses was on the Mount Sinai.
Moshe Mount Sinai male da morla arnu po.
He, he get the written instruction by the law.
Mosheke irdia oru niyamam.
But the Pharisees, they also believed that he get a oral Torah, that was only, not written, but only by words.
Purahidamare visshusikinnu, idhu edtilala, idhu vaki loda kittiyaru niyamamagunnu.
And this was like secret message from God through Moses. So they thought they were like the Pharisees. And in that way, they have made up lots of rules and regulation that was not from God, but they have just made up by themselves. But they don't like to see what Moses was saying directly in the, in the, in the books that Moses write.
So purahidamare, idhu purahidamare paranandakiyare karimana, idhu alengalidhu, publically parainare karimala. Adhondu Moshe de paranay samaythita, awarka, idhu rishtakadarunu, alengal.
Yeah. I will, yeah, let's, let's go back to this mountain of, of, of Mount Sinai.
Amukthirichu, namalavaacha, vajinathilekipoogam, i Mount Sinai, Sinai male pati.
And, and, and we know the story from Exodus.
Namakallarkum, purapadu postathena, te kadaariyamallo.
And, and for me, it have been so inspiration to.
Then ikavala re inspire, inspire janare karimana.
Yeah. And, yeah, of course, you know, the, the history about Exodus, Moses bringing the people of Israel out of Egypt.
Namak, purapadu postathikanaanakayinu, Moshe, israelmakale, Egypten, enna kondarunadu.
And through the Red Sea and into, yeah.
Chengkalavadi kondarunadu.
And, and to the, and to the mountain of Sinai.
Awadre Sinai male kondana.
And, and. And, and I will, I will, I will that we should write, now I read from, from, what? Yes. Yeah. First read from Exodus 20.
Purapadu postagam, 20 and 11.
18.
And all the people saw the thundering and the lightning and the noise of the trumpets and the mountain smoking. And when the people saw it, they removed and stood afar off.
Janamakke midimadukku minnelam, kahaladaniyam parvadumpukinadu, kandu. Janamadu kandapal, varechukonda, dhorathininu.
Ah, yeah. We can, we can read the whole thing from 18 to, to, to 21.
And all the people saw the thundering and the lightning and the noise of the trumpets and the mountain smoking. And when the people saw it, they removed and stood afar off. And they said unto Moses, "Speak thou with us, and we will hear. But let not speak, let not God speak with us, let we die." And Moses said unto the people, "Fear not, for God is come to throw you. And that is fear, maybe before your faces, that is enough." And the people stood afar off, and Moses stood there unto the thick darkness where God was. And the Lord said unto Moses, "That so shall they, unto the children of Israel. He has seen that I have talked with you."
Yeah, this is good, this is good, yeah.
Awarka Mosheada, ningal nyangalodu samsaarika, nyangal kettualla, nyangal marikadirikannadu, devam nyangalodu samsaarikiradu, enna parinu. Moshe janathodu baiputtanda, ningala parishikannadu, ningal paavantiyadiripan. Avankalola bayam ningalil indaiirikannadu, atray devam vannirikinnu, enna parinu. Anganacharam dhorathinu, Moshe devam irina, iralinu, iralinu aduthidinu.
This is very powerful.
Idhu valaray shaktamariyare vajinamana.
When, when God's presence was down on the mountain, it was lightning and thunder.
Devatindu shakti, a male el arangyavannapool, awdada, idhiyamurakondan.
Smoke and light burning.
Pogayam minnelu.
Moses have met God and speak with God once before, when he, in many years before, when he met this burning bush.
Moshe idhene mumboon, kartavinay neerattu kondathonda, oru teel, oru molpatarpil.
But this time, the whole mountain was shaking and thunder and like burning with smoke.
Ee samatha, ee mala, devatindu shakti, adarangyavannapool, mala kulungo game, chidan, idhiyamurakondan.
And the people of Israel was very afraid.
Israelmakal valaray bhaiputtu.
And I think it's very natural to be afraid when God's presence is so, so strong.
Valaray savasadanmai thudikarimana, kartavinay presence ondagumbol, bhaayamiria.
And, and people say that this Jabal Alos, this Jabal Musa is still like burned on the top.
Namal history kanaamol, inathakanaanakayinu, ndi, Jabal Alos in a male da mugal, iprum, te, teyinde, teykonde, kalumur, karthuvoathat.
And it's dark on the top and it's not from any volcano because the stones are like burned outside, but inside they are normal.
So namalano kunkayi onan, aningal, kaligal, kartavinay shakti, onapool, kaligal, katti poethendu, theli varanadu, kal, namal, polichinookan, aningal, murenirikannakal, nuokan, andu, ullemuran, valaray normalaitu, ala, vallayatirikannu, andu, poramuran, karthu, teyun.
So this is something I like to, to go and see.
Idhu enikke poi kanaan, valaray agrekinu.
And to be a witness back at home about God is powerful.
Dehatinde deshetha poi, idhu pulike, uritheli vaita kanikenam, karni, idhu valaray, athyaavshamolare karim gudana.
This happened after.
Idhu samboichidu.
God have speak loudly to the whole, the whole people of Israel, like half a million people.
Devan samsarichidu, mudhuven, israelmakalodu gudana.
Yeah. So everyone could hear God speaking from the mountain.
Allarkan kalkan kainyeranu, devan samsarichidu.
And that have never happened before and I'm not sure if it have happened after.
Inyanare, inyanare karim, adhene mumbo, adhini shesamo, narunalaita, aarinkandatulak, kettatulak.
That God speaking and half a million people at the same time can hear what he's saying.
Inyanare karim samboichadat, oru, nocha, ellad, devat, ellaisraelmakalun kalkay, male da mugal, samsarichadu, israelmakal, muranadikat, anganasambo, nerthasamboichadu.
And I think God do this with a purpose to speak the most important word so everyone can hear.
Kartavi chedathu, idhu valaray importantaitre karim, adhondu, kartavi chedathu, oru, oru purpose gundana.
And what God said by his own words, I like that we should read together.
Kartav chedagari, what he did, right?
Yeah, what he, yeah, what he said. And that's from Exodus 20, from, from 1 to 17.
Purahidamparanakari, namalurmitu vaikannaita, eni kvalarathalpiramond, adhinaal, purapadu postagam, 1, 20, 1 to 17.
Yeah, Exodus 20, 1 to 17.
Purapadu postagam, 20 and 11.
And we can read quite slow.
Namakidu savadanamai kam.
Cause every word from, it's, yeah, it's important.
Ella vaakum, valaray savadanamai kam, karnam, idhu, idhu importantaitolare vaakamana.
We can read only in, not in English, only in.
Okay, namada fashail vaichad.
Devayi vachchamalke marli chedho. Adima veedai missem deshtin, neenek kondavanna, yehovay, nyan, nidda devamagunnu, nyanallad, any devangal, nidda kondakirada, oru vighraham, undakirada, meedh sorgathil englium, thaane fumienglium, fumi kikira velathirenglium, ulayaadunidhiy pradhimim, arida, avay namaskarikyo, sevikyo, cheyedada, nidda devay, yehovay, nyan, tishnadiyula devamagunnu, ennay paikinnaviril, pirakinmaadagrittham, munaamati, nalamati, talamura varayum, makalname, sandrisikayum, ennay stehichindu, kalpignalay premanikinavarka, ayyat talamura vara, dehkaanikain cheyinu, nidda devay, yehovay, naamam, bradhayedukirada, thane naamam, bradhayedukunavane, yehovas, shikayadu, bidigila, sabathunali, sudigaripan, orkuga, aardivasam, adhwanisha, nidda veli okain chega, eerandivasam, nidda devay, yehovad, shabatha, agunnu, annanee, nidda puttinam, putrim, nidda velakannam, velakartim, nidda kandhugali, nidda padivalkilulla, paradeshim, oru veliain cheyedada, aardivasam, undu, yehov, aghasham, fumiim, samdrim, avayuladu, kee, undaki, eerandivasam, shostamaidu, adhondu, yehovas, sabathunali, anigrechisudhiricirikannu, nidda devay, yehovan, ninnakatharun deshathu, ninnakathirkaisundaguan, nidda apneem, ameeem, vikumanikeya. Kulichayedada, vipijanichayedada, mostikada, kutanan, nidda kalasashim parayada, kutanad, favnatte, mohikada, kutanad, phariyam, amitad, dasni, dasim, amitad, kaali, kardim, kutanul, yaadunidhiy, mohikada.
These are the words that God speak from that mountain.
A male da mugal, enna devan samsarichavakalana, namalipovaachada.
And everyone hear it.
Elaridu kalkanchedu.
And this is good instructions.
Idhu valaray nalla niyamangalana, nalla, prabhadanava.
Jesus fulfilling the law.
Like Jesus give the law or?
No, no, he was living completely according to the law.
Okay, kartava, i niyamangalil, jeevichirunu, kalpanagallil, jeevicchana.
And our righteousness is not according to the law, it's according to Jesus righteousness.
Righteousness, vision. Kartavinay neeti, i niyamangalil, lakartavinay neetila.
Yeah. So, so we can, with Jesus, we, we are, that's our right, Jesus is our righteousness.
Kartavaanam namada neeti maan.
But this is still the word of God and it's good instructions.
Idhu innan devatindu niyamangalana, adhu innan. It’s very good.
And God wants the best for us.
We want the best for ourselves.
And we have to be also careful that we not add to the instructions of God.
We want to be careful.
Like the Pharisees.
When they like to stone the beautiful witness Stephen. When Stephen was killed.
The Pharisees have add a lots of mad made commandments in addition to the commandments from God.
When Stephen was killed.
And Jesus confronting the Pharisees many, many times.
When the presence of God was on the mountain. He corrected them.
Because, because they have made up own rules that was not from Moses.
When Moses said the good things.
Yeah, so, that is, and also God give... Israelite camp over one year, yeah. He also give lots of other instructions from there like the alphabet we use. The first time alphabet is used in the history is was by the Mount Sinai.
When the presence of God was on the mountain.
Okay, I will, I will end and with a small testimony from home.
I believe in the story.
We have seen that the practice in the simple, the simple gospel and simple prayer have been so powerful.
When the presence of God was on the mountain.
Last weeks and month, my wife or I have prayed for people that gets healed.
When the presence of God was on the mountain.
And the way we have been learning and see it so powerful is just with very short prayer.
When the presence of God was on the mountain.
We can, we have seen like we just, if someone have back pain, that just put the hands on and say, “Pain leave in the name of Jesus.”
When the presence of God was on the mountain. It’s very simple. When the presence of God was on the mountain.
Very simple, very short, “Pain leave now.”
When the presence of God was on the mountain.
So keep it simple, the gospel of the kingdom is simple.
We don’t need the worship. We just leave it.
Then I’m finished and it’s good that you pastor James will like add or correct because it was not so clear.
If the pastor is clear. I don’t think it’s clear. This is the home language, English. When I was in England. I was in school for three months. When I went to the church. When the presence of God was on the mountain. When the presence of God was on the mountain. This is a very important story. When there are 10 people. 9 people stand there. Because this is a very important story. When the presence of God was on the mountain. When the presence of God was on the mountain. When the presence of God was on the mountain. When the presence of God was on the mountain. When the presence of God was on the mountain. When the presence of God was on the mountain. Hallelujah. When the presence of God was on the mountain. When the presence of God was on the mountain. When the presence of God was on the mountain. When the presence of God was on the mountain. When the presence of God was on the mountain. When the presence of God was on the mountain. When the presence of God was on the mountain. When the presence of God was on the mountain. When the presence of God was on the mountain. When the presence of God was on the mountain.
Also will add, I’m so thankful for Justin and his friendship with him and all the good help he have bring to our family. And practical and prayer, he have stayed in our house and it’s, it’s a big blessing to have, to be around and to be near a friend to Justin.
Basically, I thank you.
And he also have traveling with me in India and that also was a big blessing.
I went to the ministry with my daughter. I’ll just say a word about it. The two women who left. When they were born. 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 When the two women married. 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 When the two women married.
Now I remember the words, I’m finished.
When the presence of God was on the mountain.
My name is Jesus. I love him. He is the Lord of all. My name is Jesus. He is eternal. Nothing else can replace him. He has brought young and old. He is always precious. He has opened to gather all the souls into God. My name is Jesus. I love him. He has said my name is eternal. My name is Jesus. I can’t replace him.